Welcome everyone. Fifteen on Monday, February eleventh, 2019. And the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look to record show everyone is in attendance. Our first item this evening is the consent agenda. And it's the approval of the minutes from the January twenty-eighth meeting. Approval of bills and claims. And there are no licenses and permits. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. At this time, are there any oral requests or communications from the audience on items not on the agenda? If not, the next item we have is a proclamation for the Rotary International from the city of Carroll. And it states, whereas Rotary International founded on February twenty-third, nineteen oh five in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. The local Carroll Rotary Club was founded on February twenty-third, nineteen twenty-one. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self", inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary funds club projects and sponsors volunteers with community expertise to provide medical supplies, healthcare, clean water, food production, job training, and education to millions in need, particularly in developing countries. And now therefore, I, Eric P. Jensen, mayor of the city of Carroll, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February twenty-third, 2019 as Rotary Day in Carroll, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing Rotary International for its more than one hundred and ten years of service to improving the human condition in local communities around the world. Thank you.
Just so you guys know, we don't do lunch here.
No sandwiches.
No sandwiches.
No more of these together.
They have the tall ones.
We need a bigger area.
Phil's got his jokes for us.
If he gets rowdy, you gotta boot him up.
Yeah.
When they start talking about those lights.
He's on the edge right now.
Okay.
I'm all dressed up, too.
They're in the animal rescue interview.
Thank you.
Animal rescue. You're being one of us? The red sky was here in Lincoln? March.
The month broke out there.
Keep your moving guys. Come on, be there. Lot of important places to go. Should you take your cam home?
I guess we'll have more time for you there.
The next item on the agenda is ordinances, and we have none this evening. Our first, uh, next item are resolutions. And the first item is Merchants Park Baseball Field Light Towers Review Professional Services Agreement. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a professional services agreement from Shy Pattery out of West Des Moines. They have helped us with the project, the major project we did down there, the roofing project. They're really familiar with this project. Um, they've done a little work that, uh, the Carroll Athletic Association has already worked with them on. But this is more of an expansion of the towers, the lights down there to see if they're in good enough condition to continue uh, being the lighting surface or source down there. And this is a really a four-part inspection. Um, I won't read each one unless you want explanation on it. But basically, they're gonna be able to tell us if these towers are sufficient for another thirty, forty years. And just going up onto those towers and put new lights, uh, sufficient lighting in there. If you had a chance during the fall to look at what the school has done and how their lights shine down. You know, you don't really see that wasted light above. And that's something we should really look at down there is more energy efficient, better lighting than what we have down there. But the real question, I think, and Barry Bruner's here and he could, he, uh, stress, you know, their feelings on trying to keep the lights down there because they've been down there since nineteen forty-nine. Um, keep that style, that look that they've had, uh, since the fields were put in. I think they were put in the next year. I think the field was built and then the following year is when they went, added the lights at both the baseball stadium and the football stadium. So, um, this is just, um, using Shy Pattery's expertise and determining if the light poles that are there are sufficient. Be able to, one, take the weight of new lights and just if they're in a good enough condition. I think you want that drone look rather than just looking up there, um, and determining, you know, how well those stands are.
Jack, do you have any safety concerns about the current poles or? I guess that's what we really have to find out with the study is if they're in a good safe condition and working work.
I know we, I should say I know for sure, but it is my understanding we have not had anyone up on those poles for seven, eight years. I know we've had Scott Partridge one time, seen him go up there and change our lights, but, um, and that's climbing the poles. I think, I think since nineteen forty-nine, metal out in, in Iowa weather is gonna take its toll on the metal eventually. So, I think this study will really look at it close enough to determine what needs to be done.
So it'll give us the opportunity to find out if we can preserve the current poles or not?
Yes.
Let us know what the real story is on them.
Yep.
Are they gonna look at if we can mount LEDs on those? If the brackets will fit LEDs and adjustable to LEDs?
Yes.
They're gonna look at that?
Yep.
Is that something that your group has to say on the style of, Barry? That you, you have some input or you and Jack talked already, I assume?
I haven't talked as much to Jack as John Perrin and Jim Allen, Chris Whitaker have. They are unable to come tonight. But the Carroll Athletic Association was actively involved in the restoration. We wanna be actively involved. That's why we're stepping up to pick up half the cost of this. We wanna see if it's gonna make sense. Uh, we'd love to see that old look stay. Might not happen. Um, what's the big light company?
Musco.
Musco was, was here probably eight, ten years ago. We talked with them. They could put the new, uh, modern lights on these poles, but there'd be no warranty on the poles. They wanted the poles, their own poles put in. They also talked at that time that we might be able to, well, take a couple of the old poles down, towers down.
Yep.
Because of the concentration and the technology and lighting today. Um, so this is a first step. We'd love to take some next steps and talk about how we can work with the city and putting these lights up, you know, getting these things brought up to a modern standards. It's time.
So Barry, would we have a ground to stand on? If the poles are certified as being sufficient, that we could get the warranty on the lights then?
Not, not to those guys. Um, there are other light companies that we have talked with. Um, as part of this project that would look at it. So it'd be, it'd be a cool thing. But, but they have to be replaced, no matter what, so.
What is a warrant?
What's a?
How long is the warrant?
Um, I think theirs is five or ten years or something like that. At the time, I don't remember what their, it was specifically. But, uh, it's, the lighting is amazing, as you can tell from those football.
And we always switches out if we go out the LED. None of us will probably see the time where they'll need to be replaced. They're forty, fifty-year lights. And as little as they're, they're used just during the summer months, um, we won't have to look, at least ever replace them.
From what I feel, one from six towers to four towers.
Yep. It could be similar.
Is that the kind of style that you're trying to look at? If the poles, the poles have to come down?
Height? I don't know. Maybe just to stay consistent.
Have you looked to see if there's somebody that would replicate those poles?
We haven't.
I don't know if there was a antique manufacturing thing?
There's even been some talk about could they put the new poles inside the, the towers?
Inside the towers?
Save the look and, I don't know. Use their imagination. No, no sense in not talking about it.
Where those lights wouldn't be on the current poles? Stress those out anymore, they'd just be there?
They'd just be for looks. I don't know. We've had, we've had some serious discussions over, uh, a few beers. And of course, we, we get very smart when we, when we do that, so. But anyway, we really appreciate the cooperation. It'll be, it'll be a good project to get done and get started on.
Does Shy Pattery have experience in this? Is this something good for them or is this something?
No, no, they're very spent, uh, very experienced. Um, we're probably gonna bring a proposal back on the youth sports complex. Um, Musco uses them quite often for the engineering of the design and work out there.
Thank you, Barry, and your group for stepping up to help out.
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to stay involved and, and work on helping get these things paid for and everything else, so.
Any more questions for Barry or Jack? If not, I'll need a motion to authorize the city of Carroll to enter into a professional service agreement with Shy Pattery to perform a baseball field light tower review and select the options of enhanced service items of one, two, three, and four, total cost of eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item under resolutions is the Carroll Recreation Center twenty-four-hour weight room policy. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have completed the install of the cameras, the security system down at the rec center so we can make the transition to twenty-four hours. Um, the, in, in front of you, you have all the different rules. I can explain any of them. If you have any questions, uh, we did put it under the policies of procedural, uh, design that has all the policies that we're looking at. The one, um, like I mentioned in my memo, the, the one we really wanna make sure that we have support is, um, if, if I have a twenty-four hour pass and, for instance, Cody was back from college, he doesn't have a membership, I have it, I give him the card, um, I lose my privileges. So we just wanna make sure that we establish a level that you're comfortable with and we're comfortable with of enforcing. So that was the one big rule. Under no circumstances would I be allowed, or anyone, to give their stu-, their family member, someone comes to visit for the weekend, that they give them the card. Just assuming that they can do that. Um, in the, uh, forms that Joel and the staff will be using every day, we do ask them, and that rule especially, to initial it. Now, we don't have to go to the extreme of saying, um, no, you don't get a chance again. If you want what that policy, we, we will enforce that. Or if you wanna take something that you lose, you lose it for a year, you can lose it for two years. Whatever you're comfortable with, uh, we will enforce. You must be eighteen years old, was the other one. We want everyone to commit, um, to a year of membership. We don't want this, uh, well, I just wanna use it three months of the year. Turning those cards on and off is a real hard, but still, it is time and there is some labor, uh, to do that. So, um, after one year, they can cancel anytime. And then if they wanna sign up at a different time, that's fine. They just have to commit to another full year with that. Um, ten dollar replacement fee if they lose the card. If they put it through the washing machine and it gets destroyed, um, there's a ten dollar replacement fee for that. Um, all accounts supposed to be current. Uh, no past dues on their account to, uh, keep them in good standing. Any questions?
Hey, Jack, with, uh, with losing the privilege?
Yep.
Um, what would you think about putting something in there, subject to reinstatement in twelve months?
Yep.
I'm, I'm concerned about the, it, it words like they're never back again. It seems kinda harsh to me.
Yeah. We've, we've just seen that on some of the other, uh, membership places, but that's fine. I like that, like, a year.
Well, I mean, the other thing, you know, the second violation results in twenty-four ye-, twenty-four months suspension? Third year then, third time they're done.
Okay.
I, I'm okay with something like that. But it just seemed like that's a little, to me, it just seemed like that's much for the first time and not clear what would happen. I'm okay with a year when it's something you were to. Subject to a year.
Anybody else?
I was gonna ask about this, uh, dominance program, too.
And Eric, you mentioned a second violation being two years.
Second violation, twenty-four months.
I'm not uncomfortable with that either.
You're not comfortable with that?
What are you, no, I'm, I'm playing with that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Are you? Yeah, okay.
I mean, I guess, uh, if we're gonna do it, do it and make it stick, make it hurt. Cause I, you know, you don't want people violating it.
Well, I think a year is a pretty big.
For one time.
And two years the next time. When they get a card, are you gonna give them a printout of the rules so they?
Yes.
So they know they have it.
Yes, what we're envisioning is they will come into the main office, usually through Pam, Joel, or Jess, they'll sign up. They're gonna have this sheet and that specific rule, they're gonna initial by it. Um, just make sure that they understand that we have it on file. They'll sign down at the bottom. We can make a copy for them, but they're gonna sign off that they've read the rules when they leave that day.
So Jack, if, uh, I'm into this program, three months into it, I loan my card to someone, I get caught, I lose my privileges for up to a year, or for a year, uh, what happens? Do we need to address refund or anything like that, or do they forfeit? Do we need to address that?
They would. I would say we probably, we wouldn't charge them after that point, but they'd be revoked for a year. I don't feel like we should be charging them the ten dollars if we said they can't be in there.
So I just say so it's outlined so everybody knows?
Yep.
So the penalty comes from the day they're caught for a year instead of the start of their membership? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying, this is a little bit different. There's two, two scenarios in this situation. So if I would come in and say, I just wanna cancel and I'm only done in three months, I gotta pay the nine months. But if I give my card to someone and I revoke them, they don't have to continue paying that additional ten dollars. They're just revoked for a year. And then they're done.
And then pay a ten dollar reinstatement fee for the card?
Reinstate the fee when they start back up, sure.
Yep.
It might be two separate things here, but in the memo, you talked very nicely, and I appreciate it, about the review of the cameras and that city staff and comm center would have access to the cameras and that they'll be reviewed daily by the city staff?
Yes.
Do we have policy to that effect? Do we need policy to that effect so that we know?
People know that they're?
Yeah, new people come or go and who's assigned to do it to check it?
I guess that would be others.
I think it's something we can handle as staff. We don't need a policy.
You don't need a policy for it? Okay.
Jack, in that fourth, um, paragraph, I think what the others were alluding to indefinitely was we wanted to, um, do something different. Does for any misuse mean any misuse as far as loaning out, giving your card to someone? Or does that mean misuse in other situations like damage to, um, equipment? I, I didn't know if it just meant how you used your pass or other things. I thought that should be clarified.
The, i- if, if there's misuse of the equipment or misuse in the, in the building, yes, then they would be suspended for that. If they open the door and let someone in without knowing, you know, knowing that they will have a pass, um, they could be.
So it's more than just misuse of the pass?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if that needed to be clarified or, I mean, that's kinda arbitrary.
Yeah. We're stressing more the giving your card away rather than rules of in the building. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Do we have policy now with regards to use of the machines during regular hours?
No, but I think it's, the facility's supervised. I don't think we generally have an issue. I think to your point, we can, we'll clarify that.
There's nothing that, okay, I just wonder.
To make it clear that it's misuse within the facility of our equipment and loaning out.
Yeah, just maybe.
Yep.
Just one, one other question, too. You've probably done a dry run with the, the cameras and where they're situated. Are there any blind spots or are you pretty sure you've covered? You have visual access to the entire area?
We, I feel like we have twenty-four cameras in, uh, there now. I would say six to eight just in the fitness room.
Okay.
Outside. Um, if you ask me if there's anything different, we do this, I might expand the camera outside a little bit further away from the building. I mean, we have probably a ten, fifteen-foot surrounding of that door. It might be nicer.
You feel good it's?
Yeah.
It's secure enough?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Hey, Jack, just to revisit this real quick on, uh, on getting caught. So I'm looking at this same scenario. I've been a member for three months. Um, at that point, I decided I don't wanna do it anymore. If I cancel, I've gotta pay nine months. If I give my card to Misty, I don't have to pay.
But it's a mystery to the car?
It is. But it's, it's a little bit of an imbalance.
Yeah, no, yeah. Then you get caught and then you don't have to pay. Right, just have Misty go in with it. That's it.
We can definitely, for that misuse, if we cancel, we can tell them that they need to pay.
So are both banned or are, is just the, who's banned here? Who, who's out? Just the person that loaned the card? What about the person that took the card?
Cut it out or?
They, I would say they wouldn't, that's a good point. They would not be able to use facility for a year.
So that's not spelled out in here either, is it? I don't read that.
Now you got two people.
Yeah.
But, but if you loan somebody a card, then obviously they don't have one, so you can't suspend them. They don't have the ready.
Well, you can make it so they can't use it.
And, and here's, this is a good discussion. So Joel and I are both members. He has twenty-four hours. He gives me his card to use and I go in. I'm a still a member and I revoked and just the facility. I would say just the twenty-four hours.
Just twenty-four hours.
I would say the person that loaned the card. I mean, they're the ones that should be controlling their card.
So if you're comfortable with that, once that card gets revoked out of the system, you're not gonna be able to use it anyway. So he's, he's still not.
Someone else will be smart enough.
Misty will have to find someone else.
But you got, you got the capabilities of once you find that out, you can make sure their card doesn't open the doors.
That, that day we can suspend it. Yep. That hour, you know.
So it'd be a one-time violation and then after that, you don't have to worry about it.
And that's why in some of these places, they say one, one chance and one chance only. You know, they won't give up that risk if they really want it. I'm co-, I'm more comfortable with.
I'd like to start soft.
Hour, year.
If we have to, we can.
I mean, there's lots of uses.
I, I just have one question.
Boy, you can, I mean.
I know we're gonna have merchant ball players here this summer. Like boys. So, and members, can they buy a summer membership? And can they buy the summer membership to be twenty-four hours? Or do they have to be an annual membership?
Annual membership.
So our ball players will not be able to have twenty-four hour access to it? They were not making exceptions for that?
They could pay for years.
They'll have to pay for a year if they have twenty-four hour access.
Right.
Okay.
And did I hear us talking about non-transferability laws in there also?
Yeah. Big answer. So if I have it, but we have a merchant player, I can't come in and say, Joel, I wanna give my three months to.
My example, I'm done, so I give him my card and transfer it over to finish out the, the year. Is that what your example was?
No.
No?
Little bit different.
And I think one of the things are, we're trying to get this off, off the ground. I think as we get into this next six months to a year, there may be some changes we'll make and we'll learn from it. And, you know, so I think some of these details, like the merchant park, we may get more comfortable with the system and, and be able to accommodate some of that moving forward. I'm not saying that it's closed now, but I think it's one of those things we'll.
Well, I just, I'm saying, cause those boys will be in town and they'll probably wanna use the gym. But at the same token, I wanna make sure if my niece is in town for the summer, that she can use it too, if she wants to, if she's not buying a full membership. But she's not a ball player, so she doesn't have special rights. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I just wanna make sure if we're doing it for, for ten people, we're doing it for whoever.
This may be a little minor, but you got maintenance guys?
Yep.
Until two AM?
Yep.
What if they're in the locker rooms at midnight cleaning it up? Can they get into the locker rooms to shower or is that all? Is he gonna lock the door behind you?
He's gonna lock the door behind him.
All right.
Yep. I, if the nighttime cleaning is in, uh, for instance, boys and men's side, he might not lock that door again, but he's gonna be right there. Um, and again, we have cameras. If someone does it once, we'll know and we'll have a conversation with them. Those are off limits. You need to use the family change rooms. Then when they're down the men's and boys' side, they'll go over to the other side and everything should be locked.
Police department has immediate access to the cameras?
Yep, they have cards already in each car.
Do you have them, we'll sign each out, direct people to use the family changing room?
I think most will know, have been in the facility enough to know, but we could, you know, well, they're gonna know that these are the only places you can get into.
Everybody's a member.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're gonna know family change rooms, that they have to have their card to get out of the weight room. Use it, uh, two family changers are, are gonna be the only ones that are unlocked at that time. Then they'll use whatever one, then they have to get their card to get back into the weight room. You have to get their card with them.
Is there any type of emergency button or anything? Let's say a couple of people get into it and?
Not in the weight room.
I got another one for you.
Okay.
It's service dogs. What, uh, do people bring service dogs during the day?
Yeah.
What happens at night? You all right with that?
Yeah, I'm all right with it. I'm bringing a service dog, yep.
Good.
Yep.
Do you wanna bring this back?
We would like, I, what I would like to see.
Is there so much, so much that we've changed? Do you wanna bring that back to them?
I, I think we can make these edits if the council's comfortable. I mean, we can't start offering it until we approve the policy. And I know we are ready to offer that actually starting Friday. So what I've heard is, um, on revoking it, first offense is one year, second offense is two years, third offense is indefinitely. And then regarding the, if there is a loss of privileges and you have outstanding, um, commitment on your one year that you would still be obligated to, uh, fini-, to make that payment.
Okay.
Those are agreeable, we'll make those changes and get them on, on the Friday. Or we can read back.
And I apologize, I have one last question. I know this is for eighteen years and older. Do we need to address specifically children? Now, if I'm, it, not a child working out, but.
Accompanied children.
Accompanied children, yeah. The, the kid sitting in the corner reading his book while dad's on the elliptical or whatever it might be, that?
Well, I think the policy is you can't bring any guests, regardless if they're using the facility or not. So that includes underage.
I'm fine with that one. If I'll catch you.
Yep.
And just so you know, it's ninety, ninety percent of times, either Joel or I, they'll be reviewing the cameras. Andy, our maintenance, building supervisor has it. He's really the one that kind of helped get this cameras in place. His more is on the repair and, uh, side of the cameras, but just Joel and I, um, will have access to the cameras along with the police.
Is Joel the first strong man? He's the one who's in charge of it daily? If he's out or available, it's your fault, is he?
Yeah, he's. Yep. Yep, he's going to look at it every day. We have it on our laptops, so we can look at it. Or it can be on your phone if we want to have it, but we're the only ones, so.
So with regards to the cameras, the police department has access to the, the videos of that too, in case they need it for whatever purpose.
Yes.
They can review.
We have not loaded it on comm center's computer, but we're going to do that this weekend.
Okay.
Is it live feed? Like you can sit at home and watch what's going on in the gym?
Yeah. It's, it, I can have it right here on my phone.
I figured that's what it was.
Yeah.
That's all good until it gets to an Iowa Hawkeye's game, then Jack won't be watching.
I passed around and showed you.
I'm okay with it with the edits that you have available.
Any, uh, say any other questions for Jack? Otherwise, all over for motion to approve.
Uh, to approve the.
Policy.
One nine. Oh, thank you.
With the, uh.
Policy eight nineteen with the.
Noted change.
Noted changes, let's say, man. Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Seaman? Yes. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the water storage tower rehabilitation, twenty nineteen professional services agreement. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, back in November of two thousand eighteen, the Department of Natural Resources sent to us the results of a water supply sanitary survey. Those surveys are conducted by them periodically of the entire water system. This one happened to have a few requirements of the city to perform and one being the submitter of a preliminary engineering report for, um, facilities to maintain chlorine residuals. There are areas of the distribution system that have lower chlorine residuals. Uh, the DNR wants those brought up. Uh, so that, submitter of that report and then following up with whatever facilities necessary to, uh, put that into effect are requirements of the DNR. In March of two thousand eighteen, you had completed, uh, water supply, uh, distribution modeling, or excuse me, water distribution modeling and evaluation. That did, uh, make a recommendation, made several recommendations, but, uh, some, uh, did, uh, were related to chlorine residuals. And in the final analysis, the first, the recommendation for chlorine and, for chlorine residuals was, uh, to put a hydrodynamic mixer in the water tower to, uh, equalize the chlorine distribution in the tower. And then hopefully that would work out into the system, at least the model indicated that it may. So we have discussed that with the DNR and verbally, and that they've kind of consented to that verbally. Uh, it'll have to be submitted in a preliminary engineering report. Now, the work in the tower, the installation of a mixing system will require welding inside the water tower. And of course, that welding will destroy parts of the interior paint system in the tower. Now, you've got the option to either just touch up paint, that interior, whatever's disturbed, or repaint the entire inside of the tower. Uh, the paint, the coating system in the tower on both interior and exterior is twenty years old. So it's nearing the end of its useful life. It's in pretty good shape right now, but it's getting close to the end. So we're recommending that along with this hydrodynamic mixer project, that the tower be coated inside and out. Um, as I said, this project is not in the budget, um, because we only heard about it in November of eighteen. However, it is included in your reestimated current year's budget to begin that, uh, at least development process. Um, and, and to begin that development, we did request proposal from JEO Consulting Group to prepare the plans up to, up to bidding for this project. Uh, I've included their proposal, uh, with your memorandum. It, it does include preliminary engineering, uh, or final design and bid up through bidding. The estimated fee, or actually the lump sum fee is twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars and completion by July first of two thousand nineteen. Now, there are two items not included in the proposal. Uh, the first is the preliminary engineering report preparation. The DNR has not fully defined the scope of what they call a preliminary engineering report. We believe, or we think that the water distribution modeling and evaluation may satisfy that requirement and that will be submitted shortly, um, for the DNR review. If it does satisfy it, no more costs for a preliminary engineering report. If they come back and want more information, it may require an amendment to this professional services con- contract. The second item is, uh, construction services and resident project representation. This proposal now just goes through bid and it does not include those construction services because we're in the discussions with a subcontractor to do the resident project representation, the inspection. And those are, discussions are not complete, but that will come back as a proposed amendment to this agreement when we get to the point of needing those services. So at this point, unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the agreement for engineering services of J Hill here to water tower project.
I have one question about the, uh, exterior painting.
Yes.
Is it ref- is it, uh, frozen at the color we have now? Is this something we can just, can consider changing or?
You can, sure.
Okay, as you know, I remember we went to this color because it was less expensive and maybe it's still that way.
Uh, I don't know if there's much difference in experience.
Okay. When would be the time to consider if we wanted to change the color?
Anytime is fine. This, this will be under design. We'll be pulling together before July first the specification. And, you know, a decision on the color before that time would be, you know.
Well, I just remembered, I thought that we switched color because of the price at one time and that was not true. Okay.
No.
You remember why we did?
Yeah, the mayor chose.
Not the mayor, just because of personal preference?
Dr. Christen chose the color.
Okay.
But white, you know, you get, well, white color is not reflective.
If there's a reason, I'm fine with the color, but there's a bit of nostalgia that people remember a certain color that identified Harold.
Darker color. The blue.
No other town really had it.
Right.
So, uh, I thought that it was done.
Chartreuse.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you want to call it. My recollection was we did it because of the less expensive, but if it's not, then.
I mean, the lighter the color, the more reflectivity of the sunlight you get.
If there's an advantage, I'm fine with the color it has, otherwise, I think we might want to consider. You're not getting, you're not getting Hawkeye gold.
The previous color was azure blue. It was that way through two different paint, paint periods.
Yeah. Okay.
So for like forty, nearly forty years, it was azure blue. And, uh, you know, that was a good color. Paints are different now. You can still get that color. That color did chop a little bit, probably more than the one that's on it. Um, you know, fades, chops out in the sunlight. Uh, this color has not. The, actually, the exterior of the tank is in good condition. It does have some mildew on it. You can see that from the ground. But the paint itself, the, the tower was thoroughly inspected five years ago. And the painting systems, both interior and exterior, were in good condition at that time. So it wa- it was a good paint project twenty years ago. So, but no, you're certainly welcome to choose whatever color you.
Thank you.
But.
You can choose it, but I'll be the final authority.
Everybody listens.
That was the first one last time so far, I mean, the color.
You just open it yourself.
Maybe you go to those athletic association meetings and they can hash it over a beer or something. So thi- this is for, this is for the painting of the outside also?
Yes.
Correct?
This would, I, I'm recommending it that way because the same contractor does painting and interior welding. So in all practicality, a contractor can put the hydrodynamic mixing system in and prep and paint the interior and exterior.
Perfect. Will you be able to know if you have that same kind of ceramic coating that you have in there now? Kind of paint that lasted for as long as it did?
That paint system was new at that time and it did last. There certainly through twenty years, there have been migration and development of paint systems. But our, the effort would be to get the best paint system on the market. And it's, um, it costs a lot.
Should I be able to acquire that for that project? To know what kind of, okay. So then I think the other two things will come as it develops. As the project develops, we'll, we'll know whether we need the engineering report and.
Yes. The engineer, we will need the inspection. That will, that will be a recommendation. Yes.
Inspection needs to be done. Okay. Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution approving the agreement with JEO Consulting Incorporated for professional services for the water storage tower rehab project, twenty nineteen.
So move it.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman? Sturks?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the, uh, under resolutions is the water distribution main replacement, twenty nineteen professional services agreement. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A second requirement to come out of that water sanitary survey was, uh, to submit a preliminary engineering report again for facilities to maintain water system pressure. Now, this is a separate project, but there are areas in the city that have lower pressures than others. Um, and the DNR would like to see that, uh, equalized. Uh, it may be a long-term project. Um, the water distribution modeling and evaluation had several alternates for maintaining pressures in different areas of the city. What we have done, uh, to initiate that work is to propose to the DNR that we take the first recommendation of that evaluation and that was replacing the tower feed line from Main Street over to the tower. It's currently an eight-inch line and replacing it with a sixteen-inch was the first recommendation of the evaluation. So we have, we've discussed that with the DNR also verbally and they've kind of verbally nodded to that. The, the, your current budget includes funding for, to begin water main replacement projects. There's about three or four that are needed throughout the city. Um, lines that have, have been maintenance problems, others that are two-inch lines, four-inch lines that need replacing, kind of a multi-year project anticipated. Now, the, the water tower replacement line was not in that project, not envisioned in it because it was not known. Um, but we have moved it into that slot for that two thousand nineteen project and suggesting that we add to that the replacement of a line on Crawford Street from first to second, which we had originally in, included in the street resurfacing project for next year. But pulled it out to try to make this project a little more attractive, get a little more dollar val- volume in it to get a contractor to bid on it. Um, so that's the recommendation. Then again, to begin that project, we did request a proposal from JEO for project development. And actually, they have submitted one that's attached to your memorandum and it includes all the services necessary through construction of that project. Their construction services that we anticipate needed from JEO are pretty minimal. We plan on doing the day-to-day inspection in-house for that project. Their fee proposal is nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars with again, the, uh, completion of the design work going to bidding by, uh, July first of two thousand nineteen. Uh, those are, these are kind of faster track projects because of the requirements of the DNR to have these in effect in this calendar year. So we're kind of pushing forward quickly as possible. And again, the DNR has not fully defined preliminary engineering report. We intend to submit the report that's already completed and, uh, our, uh, think that it should satisfy the engineering report. But if the DNR needs more information, uh, we'll have to supply that to them. So unless there are any questions on this, I'd recommend approval of the professional services agreement for the water distribution main replacements, two thousand nineteen.
Will this project help with some of the lower pressure areas? Is this one of those?
Yes, it's one of the projects that will. There was, uh, this was actually for the cost. You can't do a whole lot to improve those pressures without either changing the pressure system because the tower is static, the height of the tower is static. So that, and that's what puts pressure on the system. What you're doing with, with this main replacement is reducing the friction loss out of the tower. And I believe the results of that study indicated even in the lowest pressure parts of the city, it may increase it by like five pounds. Now, it's not a lot, but it's, it's not a lot of dollars of improvement either. The alternatives of establishing separate pressure systems are million-dollar plus projects where you go into isolating the area and then pumping to increase the pressure in that isolated area. So it's, it's kind of the first step. Um, and this, it may take more steps. But this is the first of the recommendations of the evaluation.
So JEO will be able to tell you about what kind of pressure differential you'll get out of this?
That was in the evaluation.
That was in there, okay. Hey Randy, is this something you're trying to do, these two projects at the same time, since the tower would be drained for a period of time?
We'd like to, you know, you, to try to coordinate those. You bet. That would be the time to do it. Now, coordinating two completely different contractors, not always, it must have luck with that. But, and then of course, the other consideration is on the other, the tower painting project, you know, we're kind of parochial. We'd like to do it on our time. And our time for painting is when the humidity is low, so it's in fall, you know? So we would like to get into in the fall, but so does everybody else, you know? That's the way the business goes. But that's what we'll attempt to do and, and also attempt to coordinate these two. If there's any way to do it, we do it.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the agreement with, uh, JEO Consulting Group for professional services for the water distribution main replacements, twenty nineteen project. I have a motion and a second. This council will call it. Uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the proposed resolution supporting Iowa prison industry's affordable home program. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting, there was some discussion about these programs also from the Iowa prison industries and the Iowa Association of Council of Government uh, to establish a prisoner-built home program in Iowa. This is really modeled after a program in South Dakota called the Governor's House Program where affordable houses are built in, uh, a prison and then distributed throughout the state. Um, the state of Iowa is looking to, uh, if this program gets up and going, to build about a hundred homes per year. The initial cost of the program is about four million dollars to put the infrastructure in place, build a warehouse and to do some initial, uh, setup. Once the program is going though, um, the actual sales of the homes themselves would keep it, uh, self-procurating. Um, attached this memo, there was, uh, information about the program for the council's review. Um, and this is a resolution that was developed by, uh, Region Twelve here of consideration on supporting this program as they seek legislative approval for the initial appropriation. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council asks.
Much love, put together. Let's all put together. I'm sorry, the, to not, you know, to all put together. So basically, this is, we're sending those letters to tell the legislators to support this project.
Yeah. It's just a, a support map for the program.
The council has a whole. I did have, I talked to Kelly. She has the, the information that was in that packet. It had a model letter and then all the representatives to whom to send the letter to. So I had her, I will sign, I was going to send one to all 12, because most of them represent, they're in the representatives within that cog also. There are some representatives for us. If you guys want to, as council, individual council, you can do that too. I did talk to Chris Whitaker about that. He said each individual council person wants to do the same thing, they can sign those letters also. He said the more they get, the better. You do all 12, that's 96 letters that go out. Kelly has it already, she's already got it spooled on her if we get her, she can just spit them out, you can go down and sign them. So I'll do all 12, but if there's anybody else that wants to do them too, they can.
Spit them out for me, I'll recommend.
You want to do all 12, or just the local reps that we have?
Just as well do all 12. I've already done the two representatives, okay.
You did those.
I did.
Okay.
I'll sign.
You will? You want to do all 12 too?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Because I, now, what'll, Mike will just tell her, and she'll get it all printed.
I would say just do approval and so.
Okay. Carolyn?
Yeah.
Good with it, okay. I guess all said.
What did you want?
Thank you.
Double dip.
You're going to do it again?
Well, I only did it to two. I didn't do it to.
Well, at least then you get a signed resolution that goes in order, so.
Can I just ask a question, play devil's advocate?
Yes.
While I think this all looks great, and I did take the time to look over it, is there any reason that, I mean, anybody would be unhappy about this stuff going on? Can I just ask, does anybody know? I mean, is it a burning thing, or is anything?
So, you know, this bill was out last year also. Support included the Iowa Home Builders Association, a lot of trade councils supported it, unions supported it, obviously the COGS supported it. My understanding is the only group that really opposed it was the Iowa Manufacturers Association, I believe that's their trade name. They're, one of their lead companies, my understanding, is HON. Pella is a supporter of it, but I know locally, I understand they kind of support it because they see it be able to sell windows to them. HON is pretty against it because Iowa Prison Industries is a big producer of furniture, and so anything that comes out of Iowa Prison Industries are pretty much opposed to from that fundamental fact. I believe, and I take it back, there's a, there's a second one I just didn't, the manufacturer home associations against it, but I think it's a, they view it as competition. These homes, you know, they're, you have to be, have to meet certain income requirements, and their price point's about 70,000 to 80,000 a unit, I believe, where a module home, if you go buy off the lot, is going to cost you about 100,000, 200,000. So it is a different price point.
And then they're able to offer, offer those homes at a lower rate because the cost of the labor is less, so. That in and itself, I think, brings a whole different issue to the table, but at the end of the day, if there's that individual who's, becomes a citizen that can, you know, produce for themselves, that's even better, so. Any other questions? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the attached resolution supporting the Iowa Prison Industries Affordable Home Program.
Salute.
Second. A motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Sturks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Fire, Pumper, Truck and Street Improvements Not to Exceed $1,560,000 General Obligation Capital Loan Note. And Laura?
Thank you. The fiscal '20 budget proposal does contain a debt issuance for the purchase of a fire, a new fire truck, and some funding for the street improvement project to be completed this summer. This debt issuance is considered essential corp. It is anticipated that it would be sold after July 1st, after the beginning of our budget, and the debt is currently proposed as a 10-year repayment. The budget 20 proposal does include an estimate of principal and interest to be repaid and incorporated in, and we did incorporate that information and that tax, tax, tax asking, excuse me, into our fiscal '20 tax levy. In order for us to do that, we need to hold a public hearing and then pass a pre-levy resolution before we adopt our fiscal '20 budget, which, to set the public hearing for the budget is the next item on the agenda. Tonight would be setting a public hearing date for our next council meeting on February 25th, to hold our public hearing to enter into this, or to move on to our next step to issue this debt, so that we can include that tax asking in our fiscal '20 levy.
So this has to be done first before the public hearing on the 11th?
Yes. For the budget, the public hearing for the budget, yes.
And this is just a off-the-cuff question too. Would you have a public hearing for this on the 11th and then follow that with a public hearing for the budget on the 11th?
Yes, you could do that.
You could do that.
Yeah, we have done that before, yes.
They'd have to, this would have to be done before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Not that that's what I was looking at, but, thank you.
But since we have the time and it's working out such, we can take care of this item and then we can do the budget on the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Was, this is the pumper truck that went up in price, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then what was the, what was the expected acceptance date for the truck? Will that be in 2020?
Yeah, it'll definitely be in 2020 sometime.
Okay.
I know they're just starting to put together the specs for that, and they'll be going out to bid next couple of months, possibly.
Yeah, I mean, I think they want to, they want to send it out to bid and actually accept it before the beginning of the fiscal year. It, it's about a year process to.
Okay.
Place the bid.
And probably even get the truck manufactured, I think.
Yep. I mean, the chassis has to be manufactured from whoever we get the chassis from, and then that gets delivered and then actual construction in itself. So it's a process.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll look for a motion to set the public hearing date for February 25th for the issuance of the capital loan notes not to exceed $1,560,000 for the purchase of a new fire pumper truck and funding for street improvements, and directing the city club clerk to publish said notice.
Salute.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Sturks?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, that completes our resolutions. The next item is under reports, is the setting of the public hearing date for the 2019-2020 budget, and Laura, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After council has completed our budget work sessions, there were a couple of items that were changed in the 2020 budget proposal. $75,000 was added to the CP Streets Fund in 2020 to begin design work for our 2020 rehab project. Also, the local sales tax projections were changed to show a set aside of $1 million over the next three years for a proposed rec center indoor pool remodel, updating to the locker rooms, and east side building addition projects. And finally, the new debt issuance scenarios were completed by PSM Financial Advisors to reflect a lower borrowing amount for that rec center project that was mentioned due to setting aside the $1 million. If council approves this tonight, as discussed in these changes, I can get everybody updated budget sheets for your budget book, and we'll update the public copy viewings for that as well. So attached to this memo is the state forms, as well as the public hearing notice that will be published in the Daily Times Herald no later than Friday, February 1st, in order to hold the public hearing on March 11th, as a reminder that the budget is due to be filed to this county by March 15th. The notice goes through the, the information that we discussed that are, excuse me, not the notice, the budget forms go through all the numbers and stuff that we talked in our budget. Work sessions are now compiled into these forms. As a reminder that once this public hearing date is set, the maximum expense amounts and your tax levy will be set. So if there's any items that you want to discuss, it, it sets your maximum amount. At a later time, if it's decided at the public hearing that you want to lower, you can lower, but we cannot go up. This sets the maximum amounts. So the recommendation is to discuss any last final changes for the 2020 budget, and we would set the public hearing for March 11th, and would direct the city clerk to publish this notice.
And just to clarify, I may have misheard you, but I think you said February 1st, but you meant March 1st.
Thank you, yes. Yes, sorry. Yeah, we missed it first of all.
Are there any other discussions with regards to the budget? Any questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution for the 2019-2020 budget, which includes setting March 11th, 2019, as the date for the public hearing for the proposed budget, and directs the city clerk to publish said public hearing notice.
Salute.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Katz?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Sturks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. I trust everyone's read the committee reports. I have no comments this evening other than dry sipping home. It's going to smell pretty good on the video there, so. Any comments from the city council? How about comments from the city manager? None? Not, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. There's a, we'll go ahead and vote, I'm sorry. There's no discussion on that one.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?